I appreciate it. So, long about separate and I get a few remarks.
Good afternoon, all. I would like to run with this meeting because I hope that everyone's having a good 40th of July. Glad you could be here tonight. And with that, Ms. Byron, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Jones? Ms. Quinter?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Madame Sugar, the court so far since presence of the floor.
You think. And well, please stand and wait, please.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
Dr. Hornick, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. We would ask for one under the reports and recommendations, letter G, for an update on transportation from Mrs. Sarver regarding recent ability to acquire a security vehicle for the high school thanks to our Sheriff's Office, and we'd like to speak to the board and public about that.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda with change? I may have to agree with the agenda if I did. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda passes. Alright, let's see. The minutes, the consent, agenda minutes and financial reports. I'd like a motion to accept these, please.
I move to approve the minutes from the April 10th, 2023, April 17th, 2023, and May 1st, 2023 meetings, the June 2023 financial report, and the monthly school nutritional fund report.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Nail the monthly operating bills.
I move to approve the June 2023 operating bills in the amount of $7,977,174.11.
Thank you. And I'll review those as well, so I will second that motion. And all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So, we're now down to public comment. So, I will open public comment for the 2023-2028 draft strategic plan. Ms. Byron, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, ma'am. And a big speaker for the strategic plan. And I will call you up two at a time. We've got Jess Sipasori and Emily Potts.
I'm going to go with my mom here first. Thank you all. I'm going to give this to the board in the morning. I served on the strategic planning committee as a member of the initial committee that was tasked with coming up with the mission and the goals and things like that. Also served on the action team to support the retention of staff at the degree of all. I have lived in Orange my entire life. I grew up here as a public school student here. My mom taught here for 38 years. I taught here. I attended school here. My dad attended school here. So, it was a big deal to me to be a part of this process and to be part of continuing to help support education in Orange County. I am proud of the document that we put together. As a parent, as someone who values education, and as a member of the community who looks to partner with the school system on doing things through the work that I do with the Chamber of Commerce and my business and other things. For those that don't know, when we were in those meetings, unanimous consent was necessary. There are people here who served on that committee. There are people here who were on this action team, both board members and members of the audience. We came to consensus on the thing that we did there, and I am proud of what we did. And I am proud that everyone's been taken into account and that everyone was given a chance to say how they felt and where they think things should go. And so, I am very supportive of approving this. We were told to create an aspirational document that would move the school system forward for the next five years. And I think that we have done that in a way that encompasses everyone's views and in a way that will be positive for our school system through being teachers, supporting students, and the community at large.
(applause)
Hi, um, hi, good. So, I was on the, um, the action team for safe learning. And it was an awesome experience. It was a very good thing that you were able to do. There were a couple of hiccups with, you know, some people. It was kind of hard to get things aligned and, you know, trying to get as we were told to do. But it was alright. It was a good thing. I'm for it. We have a note on the strategic plan that came up, but we had a lot of people that came to do this. There's no reason, if we're going to put the effort, the effort to do it, you guys should actually take time to let it happen, let it go, let it be there. The other thing I wanted to say, as I've said it a few times in these meetings, people back here, we could barely hear you guys. You need to speak into your mic. The only one that we can really hear is Dr. Hornick, because he puts the mic right there. You really need to speak to it, because the people online, I've had a few people tell me that are watching live, they could barely hear you. So, really, speak into the mic, please. That's all I got.
(applause) The next two speakers are Kent Newshirr and Darlene Dawson.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. As a parent and an educator, I've never really been asked to participate in a strategic plan or really in anything collaborative for our educational systems. So, I want to commend Dr. Hornick on starting this process. It really shows true leadership, that you're willing to engage in community dialogue with diverse opinions, with various stakeholders, with people with lots of different political viewpoints. And it should just really be noted that not all school systems do this, and Inland Orange County has not previously done this. So, that really shows that we've got a great leader here in the county. Also with great organization, Dr. Wolfray did a fantastic job with organizing the committees of the strategic plan. And I have served on the action team for teacher retention, and I found it to be a very enlightening experience. So, what happened is almost everyone in the community, if they wanted to, were given the opportunity to participate, to come and have their voice heard. So, in these meetings, there were collaborative discussions. Is there everything that I wanted in the strategic plan? No. Are there things that should, in my opinion, be strengthened for students? Yes, of course. But what you have presented in front of you is a, is a, is a home run, a big win, whatever sports analogy you want. Very rarely do organizations get presented with documents where there is collective agreement from a diverse group of community members with varying degrees of opinions and ideas. So, the, the, the idea that this process really worked and reflects community values, again, for giving you a document where the vote is really a no-brainer. It is something that is unheard of to have such a collaborative discussion, and the results are positive. They give a way forward to Orange County schools. It shows good leadership, and most important, it shows the reflection of this community. So, I'm completely in support of the strategic plan. I appreciate being part of the process. And again, a vote against the strategic plan would just be illogical and very detrimental to our education for our students. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to all of the members of the strategic planning committee and the action teams. The document that you've created, I think, is very impressive, and it's especially notable that so many voices were included, as others have already said. The layout of objectives and strategies is very effective, but to me, there seems to be one unfinished piece, and that is measuring the success of each strategy. Perhaps the Cambridge follow-up steps will address this as we travel the next five years, but right now, we have a lot of wonderful expectations, but no way to actually measure the progress towards meeting them. Here are some examples that I found where I'd like to see some specifics. Where and when will those clear set of academic expectations be shared with the community? How will we know if and when we've met them? Surveys, once they're done, who receives them? How are they shared and with whom? As a former teacher myself, I remember feeling that surveys were very frequently useless because whatever teachers report is not truly being heard or valued by the administration. I think you proved that when you unanimously adopted the calendar for the coming school year, completely disregarding the overwhelming survey preference of your step. I was disappointed by that decision, because I think it could have been an easy win for teaching morale. Data collection, how and by whom is it compiled and how is it used to further student achievement? What about benchmarks in terms of gain or loss? For example, does the board expect to see, say, a 2% reduction in teacher loss per year for the next five years? Under the recruitment section, the phrase reflective of our community is used multiple times. What exactly does that mean, and how do we measure it? When it comes to hiring, what is the criteria for deciding if an applicant is actually reflective of our community or not? How do we measure a growth mindset? I know that Dr. Hornick spent some time explaining that phrase at a previous meeting, but it still seems to me like educational jargon that should have an actual measure included in the document. I feel the document overall should focus more on academic rigor and improvement, since that is our fundamental purpose as a school system. The strategy of hiring extra reading and math specialists is fabulous. The strategy involve families in social, mental, and emotional health decisions seems completely upside down to me. The wording subordinates the family to the school choosing to involve them. Families should be the ones making any social, mental, and emotional health decisions in the first place. Quarterly reviews of discipline data is a strategy for safe schools, and the plan discusses this at length and talks about using the VDOE guidance. I suspect that means PBIS and restorative justice type actions that many teachers perceive as a simple slap on the wrist with no real teeth and therefore no real change in behavior. And I think we can do better than that and go beyond VDOE guidance. Things I love in my last 12 seconds, the stakeholder engagement section, improving CTE options, posting K-12 curriculum guides online. Could we add posting library catalogs online? One central calendar for the entire division is brilliant, and a bunch of other things. Thank you for your time.
The next two speakers are Sarah Yeager and Ellen Tera.
Good evening. I come to speak as a stakeholder that was also involved in the strategic planning process. I strongly urge the board to approve the draft strategic plan as it has been presented, rather than thunder noses at the countless hours of community service and teamwork put forth in the name of best serving public education and well-being of our children. I served on the safe learning environment action team, and while I don't think the entire process was perfect, it was a valiant attempt to find compromise among strong and often opposing viewpoints. I'll admit, I felt slightly disenfranchised when I couldn't attend some of my action team meetings, but I understand it's impossible to perfectly accommodate absolutely everyone's schedules. I wish I could have been more actively involved in writing what would become the draft strategic plan, but understand why that responsibility was largely given to the team leads, who were all paid staff members, educational experts, and already trained in and familiar with the existing school policies and prior strategic plans. Do I believe that there should be more explicit language regarding safety plans and protections for marginalized groups such as minority and LGBTQ children? Absolutely. I'm also a realist who knows that this would never be accepted by locally partisan and conservative school board candidates, and one school board member who also had two of her immediate family members served in the strategic planning committee and action teams, which I felt was personally inhumance. In regards to the vote on the strategic plan, I want to reference a French proverb, "Don't let perfection be the enemy of good." This strategic plan is intended to be a working document that can be improved as its efficacy is evaluated in real time while in use, as Dr. Kurt Hornick has commented on. If the strategic plan is not approved, we open the door to it being torn down even further. Stripped of words such as critical thinking, because fear mongers, deep killers of our community feel critical, is too much of a lightning rod word, given it's in the acronym CRT. Please do not reject our strategic plan. I say "our" intentionally, because it was a fair and balanced community effort in compromise. Stalling on proving the strategic plan is too risky, given the rapidly approaching school year. It would leave Orange County public schools completely waterless and even more vulnerable to partisan attacks on the integrity of public education.
I'll be brief, but I do want to say a few things. One is, um, thank you for involving the community, myself personally, in this whole process. I come to you wearing my mom hat, as a mom of a 10th grader, 7th grader. I really appreciate it being part of the process, and I also want to thank you for the actual process. Basically, the entire strategic team that took these visions at 30,000 viewpoint above, and then the action team brought down to 10,000 feet viewpoint, where on both of those teams, we, as Sari even said, we had to come together and come to consensus to come to, we had lots of people agreeing and disagreeing and talking and listening, and to come together for the sake of our students was just brilliant. And I love that we can have those discussions with each other and feel safe doing that. So, thank you for that. And the challenge I leave you with is, now you have this giant group of people who are ready to keep working along with this process, so I ask that you keep asking us to come to these meetings and, and bring it down to 5,000 feet, 10,000, 5,000 feet, whatever it takes to bring the plan all the way to fruition. So, thank you.
The next two speakers on the strategic plan are Rob Tera and Sandy Harrington.
Yeah, I'll be brief as well, but I just wanted to, again, Dr. Hornick, it was really brilliant, uh, the way that you chose, um, to have the strategic plan come together, uh, as a consensus. At first, I thought it was crazy. I'm like, it's never going to happen. This community is so, so divided, and I would get updates from my wife, who was on the strategic planning part, and I was just like, oh, gosh, is this going to happen? And then it did. And I know not everyone's happy with the document, but it's a great document. I was able to be part of the, uh, action teams, and, um, it was interesting to see so many people from the community. There were teachers, there were administrators, there were parents, there were grandparents. Uh, there was somebody who just was a business person in town who just, um, didn't have any stakeholders in it, but was part of the community and wanted to be part of the process. So, the, I've been on strategic planning teams before, and it was nothing like this. It was just a bunch of teachers and administrators sitting in a room for a couple hours, just word smithing a few things done, and then you didn't look at it again until it was time to, uh, do it more. So, this, the fact that this is a working document, that all the community members were brought in together, and the consensus part of it, I think is great, because not everyone's happy. I don't think everyone's completely happy with the document, which means that it's a great document. So, I hope that, um, you all vote yes on the strategic plan, because there's a lot of hard work being put into it, and I really think that, um, the process was great.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Hornick, members of the board, community, parents, teachers. Um, I just wanted to say, number one, that I very much appreciated the process. I was impressed with it. I felt, as you've heard from other members tonight, that it was collaborative, it was respectful, and it was inclusive, and it was driven by what's in the best educational and instructional, um, good for our students. And I really felt that that was said, it was, it was just clear by the people that were there and the participation and the communication that occurred. Um, as everyone has said, there was a diverse group of people, um, but, and a diverse group of ideas of how things could go forward and a good path. Um, everyone seemed comfortable with sharing their, their thoughts and, and listening to the other people's thoughts. It was good conversation, and, um, I have participated in other strategic planning processes, and I was impressed. I think I was impressed with the overall commitment by so many members of this Orange County Public School community and family. So, I'm very pleased. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to participate in the action group. I was on the safe school environments, and again, um, just impressed, pleased, and look forward to passing the plan. Um, it is a living document, so I do hope that we are analyzing it on a annual basis, bringing some information back to our community and our stakeholders, um, but I think you've done a wonderful job, and I appreciate the, the opportunity to be involved and the opportunity to, um, support Dr. Hornick and his, um, strategic leadership and mission. So, thank you again.
(applause)
And it's up for the strategic plan.
Thanks for hearing that no one else has signed up for the strategic plan. I would declare that public comment closed. And open general public comment. At this time, Ms. Byron, is it anyone signed up for general public comment?
Yes, we have three people signed up. The first is KJ Potts. Oh, Miss the wall, and Paul Harris.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and members of the board. My name is KJ Potts, and my pronouns are they/them. First off, y'all heard my mom, Emily, Emily, my mom earlier, um, say that you should leave the strategic planning committee alone, and that for all of you guys that don't speak into the mic, it, it makes no sense. Like, it's not like you have to go like this. Just do it like this, and you don't have to go like this. It's really annoying when y'all go, "You guys do that." Like... Like, the mic's not going to give you COVID. It's, you don't have to social distance it from your face. And for all of y'all homophobic people in the audience, neither of them are scary. So, speak into the mic. Thank you, and that's all.
Good evening, everyone. I was praying for an easy go of things once the strategic plan was presented to our nonpartisan school board. The team that was chosen had a variety of people from OC, from different professions, racist, sexist, et cetera. I still remember leaving the first meeting feeling encouraged and enthusiastic about the possibility of diversity being embraced and celebrated, not to mention our main focus, bettering Orange County public schools for our students. We've all had different past experiences, ideas, beliefs, codes of ethics, levels of emotional intelligence, political beliefs, and so on. However, when discussions began, questions asked, and critical conversations, with respect and removing certain things, I realized we might not all believe how to get it done, but there was one common ground, 100%, what needed to be done and why we were there. I was disappointed on this Dr. Hornick's presentation of the plan to the board, but even more disappointed to see so much commentary, especially from those who were in on the process. Now the prescription, because they have an audience that supports the idea, certain words can't be used. But while we met, those same people supported what was said, especially by definition. Words carry power, we give, the power we give them. Red flag words, phrases such as diversity, equity, equal inclusion, critical, critical thinking, social emotional talent, learning, SEL, and so forth, have the ability to create argumentative responses. But divergence, assortment, medley, range, honesty, and partiality, square deal, justice, fair-mindedness, immiserate, balance, coordinate, identic, proportionate, and analytical, particular, discerning, brainstorming, reasoning, deliberating, self-control, interpersonal skills do not spark the same reaction. However, those are synonyms, synonyms for the red flag words, but they haven't been openly used in political settings. See where I'm going with this? And power we give to words just on super thought, just keep it in mind the next time you hear what's deemed a red flag word. Possibly consider that actual definition, and you might find yourself not so bothered. We are long overdue for community charades to happen, to have open, honest, civil discussions, to educate one another on our differences and our concerns, to better understand one another and become more unified regardless of labels. James, chapter 2, 8 through 9, "You do not, you do well when you complete the royal rule of scripture. Love others as you love yourself, but if you play up to those so-called important people, you go against the rule and you will be convicted by it." Acts 10 and 34 to 35, Peter explains his good news, God's own truth, and nothing could be plain, and God plays no favoritism. It makes no difference who you are or where you are from. If you want God, the door is open. I hope you all have a good evening and good people.
I guess I should practice speaking into the microphone. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Hornick and the, uh, board for allowing me to speak here. Uh, I'm basically, um, just going to speak about the need for a, uh, community coordinator, volunteer coordinator for our community. I also was on the, uh, on the committee, and, uh, I've had a lot of experience in community relations, uh, being a volunteer for a number of years. I worked a school system, and then I retired and missed, uh, missed, uh, a, uh, substitute teacher for a number of years. I think I'll retire again this year, but, uh, that's not the point. I just feel that it's very, it's a significant need for a, uh, at least one person to be a designated, uh, community, uh, volunteer coordinator. Whether that person may be, uh, part of the, uh, school board staff, or whether that person is, uh, appointed or is a volunteer, uh, and is, I mean, in the direction of the school board, one such a person helping to, um, coordinate, um, the schools that are already using volunteers, uh, reaching out to the community, reaching out to businesses, the nonprofit organizations, uh, anyone that wants to participate, reaching out to the students. Uh, many teachers, uh, and we have many programs where our high school students especially, um, are encouraged to volunteer. At this day and time, communication is so important. At this day and time, being able to get along with each other is very important. And I think that if we start from the top and, um, having designated community, uh, volunteer coordinator, I think that would be a step in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Byron, seeing that no one else has signed up for the public comment, and we continue with, um, the document from the 90th.
I thank you very much. At this time, we will head to reports and recommendations, so I'd like to invite, uh, Dr. Wolfray Hogg for his So, I'd like to invite Dr. Wolfrin Hocke, as well as Ms. Aylund, to come forward. And this evening, they will present to you, as we do annually, information about federal grants, labels 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to discover some of the process that's used for applying for the federal grant applications each year. Starting with the timeline, each year in July, we request the school board to approve our ability to apply for these funds and then we submit that plan to VDOE for approval. During the month of August, during the month of August, we make revisions to the plan based on TFA from the Virginia Department of Ed. And we also wait to see what our actual allocations will be. That usually happens in late August or early September. And then we revise the plan for the actual amount. And then throughout the life of the grant, we request reimbursements for the approved expenditures through the Virginia Department of Ed, the omega program. When we're writing these grants, we utilize a lot of different things that we have to take into consideration. One is professional development. We have to train our staff to meet the needs of all students at all different ability levels. We have to train our specialists to be able to provide interventions to students. We request teacher input for instructional materials or training that might be needed. We look at our academic data to make those decisions on how we're going to use the grant to its fullest. Each year, we do a needs assessment. We receive input from our principals and schools through that needs assessment and also through parent advisory committees. And all of that goes together when we are developing those plans. So, now we'll look at each of the specific plans and what we're asking for your approval to be able to comply.
We're going to provide a brief review of each of the grant applications, Title 1, 2, 3, and 4. These will include a projected amount. As Dr. Hornick said, the amount will change throughout the course of the year. Will potentially could change. And then how those funds will be utilized to serve our students. So, the first grant that we'll talk about is Title 1. And Title 1 is used to support our schools with high percentages of students who are from low-income homes. Currently, we have four schools that are designated Title 1, Gordon Barber, Orange Elementary, Lightfoot, and No Elementary Schools. Funding from Title 1 is used to provide salaries and benefits for youth specialists. Not all of them, some of them are locally funded, but some of those positions each of those four schools, as well as supplemental instructional materials and funding also for events to engage families and help support learning at home. Dr. Hornick is going to come back and talk a little bit about Title 2 and Title 3.
The estimated allocation for Title 2 is listed here. The purpose of that grant is to support academic programs through professional development of teachers and principals and also to provide us with conferences and trainings for those people as well, not just train us to begin, but bringing people in and training people to conferences to help increase their effectiveness. We also utilize this, in some cases, to help, to help provide the support for teachers when they are applying for their license as well. That can be used here, as well as new teacher development when they're hired. And the next one is Title 3. And Title 3 is our smallest grant. It is what we get from the Virginia Department of Ed for, actually the federal grant for our ELL students. And it supports our programs that we use to go above and beyond what we offer all students in our division. For example, we use some of these funds to help fund an ELL tutor to help those students with acquiring the English language. And we also have activities for parents, as well as providing some materials and supplies. It is our smallest grant of the three. Sometimes we get more for immigrant youth, but that's on a year-to-year basis. So, we did not get any last year for that. And the last grant is Title 4. It's approximately $53,000 each year. And these funds support access and opportunities for a well-rounded education for all students to support school conditions for student learning in order to create a healthy and safe school environment and support access to personalized learning experiences that are supported by technology and professional development for the effective use of that technology. These funds will be used to support part of the STEM curriculum, professional development for the STEM curriculum, a student support coach, and funding for outpatient counseling services for families who are unable to afford the co-pay. There is an application and that's open to any family in the school division. Those are the title grants. Does anyone have any questions?
So, this is an action line of the night. So, is there anything you'd like to add to that topic?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And other any questions? Then if there are any questions, I will then kind of mention.
I'm going to approve the submission of federal grant applications. Can I accept all I've ever must say now? Bye.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. And I know Ms. Aylund will stay here for our next item, letter B. And we are really happy to be able to bring this document forward for your review and information this evening. As we, over the last year, as I move through my transition and through the strategic planning process as well, one of the key theme that we heard is the importance of student behavior on the bus, in school. It's important for many reasons. We don't want classroom disruptions. That takes away from the limited instructional time that we have already to get through the large number of standards that we have to get through, as well as competencies. It truly is a culture and climate killer. It makes everybody's job, from teacher to principal, to bus drivers, and everybody in between, more difficult. And it has become very clear to me that the folks in this community want to have a document and some parameters established. And so, we came up with the idea of actually taking information out of the parent handbook. And so, these themes and parameters were, they existed. This just makes it much clearer. So, this document that you have before you is designed to be some enhanced language to our community, to establish expectations, to work in concert with them, to recognize and highlight specifically the responsibilities that we hold ourselves accountable to, what the administrators' jobs are, what our teachers' jobs are, what we're hoping to get as far as from our parents and guardians in the way of support. It also establishes ranges of consequence based on, that are age-appropriate, developmental-appropriate. Based on, you will see some that there are higher levels of consequence naturally in a secondary setting for certain activities than in an elementary setting. From this document, our principals will be able to much better establish and use language when they're sharing with parents. I've already heard from a number of our principals that they appreciate this enhanced language and the clarity with which it's presented. They will be able to use that to work with their teachers to build their in-house behavior management plans, working within parameters and guidance, certainly from the VDOE, but ones that we also know that are important. It establishes and maintains the communication with our law enforcement and shows some of the different areas that we will have a mandatory report. And thankfully, as we get more sheriff's deputies and SROs in our building, that, those lines of communication to ensure that that support and dialogue is flowing both ways will be significantly enhanced. And so, I also believe that this document is very much in line with the information and the thoughts of the strategic planning team, both the 30-member strategic plan group, as well as the Safe and Secure and Support of Schools team. And so, again, we are very much happy to bring this forward. Susan was a primary author, Ms. Aylund was a primary author in this, but it's certainly been a collaborative effort. And she is here to answer any questions you may have this evening. Again, this is to bring forward to the community and to the board to get an idea of where we, to get an idea of what we were thinking as far as code of conduct and student behavior and what our expectations are. And again, myself and Susan are both here to answer any questions you might have at this point. We know it's a lengthy document, but it does include a lot of really important information. And we will seek your approval later this month so that hopefully this is ready to go for the school year where this document will be sent out. We'd like to do it in an electronic format, hopefully utilizing Power Score, our Power School application, so that it also can be acknowledged by our, by parents and guardians, as well as our students. So, they're very clear with what we are expecting as far as behavior when they return to school on August 9. So, we see this as that first step to rebuilding, a next step in rebuilding trust with the community and really a first step in making sure what we expect is very, very clear to our students in particular.
Another notification I would like to give is that this doesn't replace the student-parent handbook that goes out every year. It takes a piece out of that handbook and makes it more of a student-parent notification. So, there are other things that were required to notify parents and have them sign off on. So, that document will actually just be smaller and more condensed for those notifications. This takes the student code of conduct out of there and really elaborates on, one, I think it was important to include board policy. This is what our school board policy says and making sure that that's accessible, as well as here's what we have to report to the Virginia Department of Education so that everyone is fully aware of the parameters that were given and codes. And from the Code of Virginia, there's hyperlinks in here as well that take certain pieces of it straight to the Code of Virginia to help explain why we have to do some things the way that we do. So, happy to answer any questions.
On page 4, fourth paragraph down. It states, "Parents of students who are absent must provide a valid note stating the reason for absence upon returning to school or at least within five days of first day absent." If they're absent for six days, would that not put them out of compliance with the code of conduct?
As long as they provide a note when the student comes back. But in between, there's also a lot of phone calls that happen between the school and the family to, you know, we've noticed, you know, Suzie's been absent for two days. How can we help if there are any assistance that we can offer? So that there's already some communication going back and forth between the school and family to know why someone's not there. Or families, if they had a trip or something that they were going on, they have typically let us know what they're doing.
Would it be more concise or, I guess, better worded to state, upon returning to school within three days of return or something like that, so that way it doesn't automatically, you could argue, that child is out of compliance?
I'm happy to make that change. And if we need to come back as far as a policy revision for the board, and absolutely, we'd be happy to make that change if that was the consensus in the wish of the board. I'd be happy to, absolutely.
I think we can make note of that since we have two board members absent. Suzie and just put it, you know, make their petition that we're supposed to have and add to, ask, add this, that, so that we can deal with that.
I do think this is an opportune time. I think that's a great, great question and comment brought forward, Ms. Quintero. Just a reminder to everybody in attendance that are, that when we talk about chronic absenteeism, the Department of Education does not distinguish between any of the reasons why a student was out. And so, for the purposes of judging a school utilizing chronic absenteeism, if you were out five days with flu with an excuse note and you were out five days because you skipped school unexcused, schools are held equally responsible for both of those. And so, ultimately, the point that we try to get to with our policy is, one of the most difficult things we're trying to do is establish and direct our resources to the places that really need the resources to be expended. And so, if we're going to have, for instance, a social worker begin to engage with the family of student, and you have two families and each have a student have 15 days absent, we're trying to determine which one is a true chronic absenteeism insofar as the parents didn't know about it or perhaps they supported, but don't make the student go to school versus the kid that was on a 15-day trip, family vacation slash educational trip to do. And so, that's where a lot of this language comes in, is really to try to get folks to understand. We are trying to figure out, in the realm of all the students we have and the days missed, where the true chronic absenteeism lies so that we direct our resources, particularly for those students, as opposed to ones that are more in the excuse realm that begin. We're held accountable either way. And so, the state of Virginia says in order to be a Level 1 on your accreditation report, that 15% or less of the students in a particular school have to miss 10% or less of the school days. Okay, so meaning in a 180-day school year, 15% of your students need to miss 18 or less school days. And so, that's where, and when we're talking about five days of being absent, you know, that notification within three, that could certainly help clarify and get the information to us a little bit earlier. And again, so this is currently how policy JED is written. And so, we could certainly look at and bring forward a recommendation that will change that policy to get the notification quicker, which then we could subsequently change here in our draft to you. So, I think that's inappropriate. But I just, as a reminder, that's really the challenge with absenteeism is, you know, extended medical, hospital visits are much the same way that a student's skipping school. And so, it's important for us to be able to differentiate between.
I really don't have any questions as of yet.
Okay.
It is a long document, 39 pages. I really don't have a question. I will say, in looking at, you know, different samples and things that are out there, there are some that are 80 and 90 pages. We wanted to make it very readable for our parents and our community and so that it wasn't so much information you stop reading, but enough information for understanding.
Thank you all very much. And we will now move through to our next board call, that received presentation of proposed policy provisions. And so, at the last meeting we had in June, we were discussing proposed changes to GBA and II BEA. So, I'd like to start first with a piece of advice, a recommendation from the BSBA. So, if you could scroll down, they came out recommending the school divisions include this part here at the bottom, where it starts with, "No employee or agent of the school board personally contracted to the school board." And it talks a lot about, and this is based on recent legislation with respect to WeChat, TikTok, or any other website developed by Light Dance Limited or Tencent Holdings. And so, when we were speaking originally about Ms. Quintero's recommendation to have the established provisions, which we have up here, currently is number nine, I mentioned at the time that we knew there was going to be additional language that was going to be placed in these two policies so that we made sure that we're in compliance with our recent legislation and information that came out from the General Assembly as well as from the governor. So, I wanted to draw the board's attention to that language because that is, that is new. From the last time, you would have seen this in June. And then, I did take the recommend, the proposed wording slash the idea behind the wording of of having students, parents and guardians be informed about electronic communication that isn't related to school activity to our division council. And he provided the language and I think we might have some additional discussion on that. Happy to do that here, but that is, those are the two. I, I wanted to make sure we drew the attention to number nine as well as to this new paragraph that was added, which you would not have seen in June.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to give a note? Well, I did want to discuss point number nine.
Oh, yes, um, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. Um, I said both, but I feel like, um, G, G A B and I I B. Um, as far as the provisions, I did see that there was a clear loophole that would allow for blanket notifications at the beginning of the year, which my intent would be that parents know the content of the discussions, not just that they may happen. So to further clarify point number nine, I would prefer to amend it to provisions establishing that staff must include slash copy a student's parent slash guardian on all electronic communications with the student on topics unrelated to school activities except when the parent slash guardian opt out. We can add that on there so that when the other ones, we'll review it again, it'll be there.
Yeah, that's no problem. Ms. Aron will make that change and that language will be, the, the words missing will be in number nine to enhance that language when we bring it back to you in the twenty-fourth. No problem.
I just have one, just have one more generic question and I've noticed on the last couple of ones that we have done, where we talk about this school business with J P A's. Is there something that hurt why you're doing that or was there some reason you changed your stance? It's in the second paragraph, that I I I B A, it's also in the second paragraph of the J P A.
Okay, so the, these were out of the, the policy drop that came through the V S B A. And I'm, I'm going to work under the assumption that it is to show a wider scope as far as school businesses as one individual school versus the fact that the division covers all of, all of the sites within, that, that there isn't an exception for any particular site, that all, all of the schools are encompassed under the, under the division umbrella to try and make it clear that all sites are being held to this standard, including, including central offices and folks that are not based in school. So that might be clarifying language to show that it, that it's meant to cover all, all employees regardless of the site in which they work. Could be maintenance, it could be bus drivers, et cetera. It's, we should, we should be handling things that are tied to, you know, the actual business of, or the school division as well. But I, I'm gonna, I'm thinking that is the intent to try to make it more comprehensive that all employees are held to that standard. Would you agree?
I'm just curious, because like I said, I've heard the last couple of ones and I didn't know if there was a reason specifically. I believe you're giving any purpose to that somewhere else.
Got it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will go to letter D. I know there's been information that has been brought forward and recent news reports, et cetera, about the K-11 learning grants. But we, I originally spoke with the board about this, um... Okay, let's say A, that sounds better. About the K-11 learning acceleration grants program and some potential, some potential consternation with existing board policy and whether or not we should amend board policy, which currently states that teachers should not be essentially working for and tutoring students who are currently enrolled in that particular subject or class being paid by an outside provider. And so I was just coming back to you and I'm not sure because this really, this initiative doesn't necessarily come through school divisions. It is publicized and parents, guardians, students and teachers can sign up to participate. But ultimately, our recommendation, as well as working with the division council, is to maintain our policy. It doesn't leave any teacher out slash employee out from wanting to engage and be a tutor within class wallets and within the learning acceleration program. So just certainly back to the board to follow up that it is ultimately our recommendation, my recommendation, we just leave our current policies in place that doesn't, it doesn't hinder anybody's ability to participate in this program. That was more just information. And at this point, we'll move to letter E and Ms. Aron will come forward. And he will be here for letters E and F, I guess, correct, though, to provide status on the performance contract. And I know Frank from A B M is here. Good to see you, Frank. Thank you for being here. And then he will stay up to, to, to give a, a pretty robust overview of some of the, some of the work that we have been engaging in over the past few months. Mr. Arnold?
Yes, Ms. Quintero. Thank you, Dr. Hornick, and chair members of the board. First item, as Dr. Hornick mentioned, is that we have now got traction with our performance contract. The initial proposal was presented back in December and was approved by this board on January the second at the regular meeting. Since then, we have worked with A B M and Dr. Hornick, Mary and all the board of the county. And the county has approved the funding for the extra portion of that which enables us to overhaul A G H C at Lord Park. And that was about a one point two five million dollar A M. Creating a total contract at that time, I think it was about five point six five million. Since then, we've had some more negotiations with A B M and with Bank of America. And the two things that have changed is that the cost of the project has gone down slightly due to the unfortunate aspect that we couldn't build the roof at Lord Parker. We've been able to rent the refrigerator lines to enable units, to create a whole group of them and not have to go through the steel. It's gonna make it easier for the contractor to be able to do it too. That's all set by interest rates being higher, so our net cost is above what the board said. And the other condition of the county triple is that we've heard this to be a matter of twenty twenty-three. So that's why we have to do that now. But we're ready to go. We're very happy to have a conference call with many folks that are heard. Where's the other thing?
Thanks.
Wednesday. This will, so that will be one of the final steps against pretty subtle things in this state. Any questions or comments for the board, Mary?
And this will be a project for next summer.
Lord Parker, the line can be done after hours throughout the year. Lord Parker, so. All right, moving on to all of the various projects that are underway. We did deliver up to the union, starting of course, Lord Parker. Been a lot of the trees that finished out, roof design was good. If anybody hasn't been tried there yet, I would strongly encourage you to use the brick design windows area. It looks like five building curbs at the school. Roof will also make you visualize what the existing building could look like with that roof. The drywall roofing, sidewalks, darkwood windows, doors plumbing electrical are substantially complete. We're able to see that they're in case work, plumbing electrical trunks. They've also installed a temporary AC unit to get the building cool and able to finish the traffic center. And, uh, the C two floor, you can see, uh, everything pretty perfect. We should, uh, wait this month. Moving on to Fronten sports center. We have repaved the driveway in the parking lot next to the building and removed the, uh, the very abrupt speed pumps that were there. There were three of those. We replaced them with two speed pumps on each end. It was able to power nine floors with triple running speed. It's still constructed, fully working. That we repaved, it's kind of hard to restart it. Also at, uh, County High School, we have renovated the nursing lab, counseling center, the office conference room, restored area, and several offices and classrooms. There are also some renovations in the old gym. And that work is substantially complete. There's some finishing touches on the counseling center. We're also going to paint the upper part of the hallways. And then on the, uh, I think this whole, I believe, the buildings that are on there are taken pieces, which would be, uh, the firework cottages, the J R T C building and also the, uh, go angle. The, the workup needs to keep these in the tail. Good flooring and burning cottages and in the, uh, J R T C building. And the go angle, yeah, one way that we essentially got it, we moved wood block and made it both new code. The attractive place to, uh, work. Also at the high school, we're doing some exterior renovations to improve, to improve it perfectly. Such as landscaping, we've taken out a lot of trees, we've left the remaining tree by the school, so we can look below. So for a lot of shade, I don't know if you want that. We're also going to paint the exterior of the wooden cottages to resemble, you know, the same blue upper winged colors given we have the rest of the facilities at Lord Parker. And we have like a system for the rest of the school. See what we're running. Onto Prospect Heights Mills. Uh, we've replaced the walk-in freezer and refrigerator, which, uh, were original to the school. And, uh, the freezer unit actually started to settle and we have to make a proper, um, pad. So, but those are done. We also have painted the kitchen, installed some portable wall protection. Those are, keep our walls and the kitchen pretty good up. As in other schools, there are several blocks that take a lot of the bricks to just keep our door. But we compensated for that by putting quarter doors and, uh, buying a wall protection on the lower parts of those walls. Um, we are also replacing the absolute fire block panel. Which strangely, the two schools built at the same time have two different grades of fire block panel. And the one that looks for the elementary is the same, the factor is all the others in the entire building. But this one is a determining factor, kind of obsolete, can't repair it. So we're probably going to pull up this year and replace the whole thing, replace the whole process. Also at Project Heights, uh, the children's are coming in and they will be replaced starting next week. That's a great part of the project. But it has a ramp. And we will be doing the same thing for the school elementary school, but we don't have those. We have those, we need to deliver it probably in September, install after, put the season panels. We've got it down at school, getting it, uh, for the class. Unionville and Lightfoot, uh, walkway connectors are proceeding. Both have the demolition work done. Canopies were removed, underground plumbing work done, footers, outdoor slab. The block walls are, they installed a bearing, like plates of the bar doors. The bar doors have not arrived here, so that will drive the standalone interior. If I'm able to go back and shop the exterior, we can, uh... Also, the Unionville Blackfoot, the people are having a seat of lettering on those. Put, uh, new lettering on the front wall of the cafeteria. We need smaller letters right on the front entrance. So we're looking at, uh, this whole school at the spring. Perfield Park, we have removed all of the block structures and other features. We have some standard fashion facilities, all the concession stands, storage areas. We brought a, we reduced the number of sheds here at start, as though we consolidated to one shed. And we moved the other shed to Perfield Park and that was able to store what remaining materials we have, such as motors and fertilizer that were stored in the, they're not in that shed. Cinder block structure is gone. We also removed the small tapers there before we come in. Yes, fortunately, the steel structure through the bleachers was built for the signature block walls. So that's still standing. We also took out the large scoreboard that was here in the tree. Last ten mornings. Anyway, so that scoreboard is gone. The scoreboard that we installed prior to football season. Temporary smaller big scoreboard that was there, we used that to, it was damaged, that is now. We're in the project access, that will be renovated and installed there. Last but not least, Unionville kindergarten manor is getting all the floor. The remaining asbestos in that building that were moved. And the floor tiles that were installed on half the building. I think she lasted, so we're gonna relax that this week. I'll try to come back in the other pair of quarters of this month. That's all I've got for now. There are more, but, um, probably not as much.
Thank you, though. And this time, this is our additional letter G. We're just starting forward. We give an update on transportation. Again, this is referencing our recent acquisition of a, uh, security vehicle for our high school security officers.
So during the winter part in the school year, there were several conversations about what we could do that helped augment our school safety. Primarily, I don't know, if you've been on campus, you've probably seen the orange golf cart. And it's effective, we're getting around the core campus, but it's not effective in inclement weather. And there's limitations to what you can do with a golf cart, truthfully. Starting to talk about feasibility and potentially taking an existing division vehicle and converting it into a campus security vehicle. At this time, we just don't have the extra vehicle. I was afraid to decommission a car that we may be used to in this, in special needs. And really, funding wasn't there to replace an existing vehicle, to rotate an older vehicle to that purpose. So I reached out to Captain Smith just to see if by chance I may have caught the timing right to find a decommission. Sheriff's cruiser. And he got back with me and found an acceptable vehicle. It's a twenty sixteen Ford Interceptor. It's a police version of the Ford Explorer. And it's in a condition that will give us many years of service. We will outfit it with amber lighting, uh, school security graphics. And we'll be able to use it for events. We'll be able to use it for daily activities. Needs to take, if a school staff needs to take somebody home, various uses. So we're very appreciative to Captain Smith, the Sheriff's Department, and as well as the board supervisors and all others involved in making this free transfer, free asset transfers of purchases. Very appreciative. I'll keep you posted on the progress as we update it.
Thank you, Justin. And madam chair members of the board, that is all proceeding for reports and recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you to Captain Smith and the Sheriff's Office to make, to make that happen. That just goes to show you that working relationships. Um, at this time, can we have closed session certification, please? For citizens two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia Act, the Orange County School Board will convene a meeting following discussion of personnel or performing on the division employee, a law card protection chief of three dash thirty-seven eleven A. In line with the legal hand, resignation from the... In line with the statute of habit, resignation, termination, transfer employment, salary adjustment, and, and the section of people personnel is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A. Two, for early admission, waiver, waiver of compulsory attendance out of county, out of district, and due to this. And keep, can I have a second, a second? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
We are in closed session.